Bill.
Oh, I don't have my clipboard. He's here, isn't he?
He is.
Yeah, he just pulled up.
Oh.
Right beside me.
Okay. We gotta ask him for the clipboard.
How are you?
Very good.
I'm excellent. I'm Holly Meyer, I'm Circuit Judge.
Thank you.
I'm running for reelection, how are you doing?
Good.
I'm, uh...
I've been in your court before.
Okay, well, I hope it was a good thing, I've ruled some for the city and some not for the city, so...
Yeah, depends on what side you're on, I guess.
No, it doesn't depend on what side you're on, it depends on what the law is, that's, that's the difference, is between me and the other guys, that, uh, I'll rule regardless of which side you're on, so regardless of which side you're on...
No, I'm just saying, depending on what side you're on, if you like the outcome or you didn't like the outcome, no problem.
Right. Right, that's right, that's exactly right. Hi there.
How are you?
I'm well.
How are you?
I'm Holly Meyer, I'm Circuit Judge.
Yes.
I'm running for reelection.
What would you say about it?
Ladies?
Hello, Holly. Were you sitting near Collins?
No, I'm just, I just did my stuff on that, uh, speaker, because it was convenient.
Yeah. Running for election again.
That's right. This is my third election, so...
Yeah. And when is that?
March the third, first Tuesday in March.
Okay.
Same time the, uh, um, all the, all the partisan primaries are, they run judges, because judges are nonpartisan, but they run at the time of primaries.
Okay.
So that'll be decided in March.
It's a long time away.
It's never too soon to work hard.
That's true. You get out of it, which put in, did it?
That's exactly right. I was the, uh, before, I've been a judge for ten years, but before that I was prosecutor for twenty-seven, so I understand hard working long out, so it's not a problem.
I'm sat in that court for a few times, it's been a while.
I've had a lot of worshiping people in court, hi there. Oh, excellent. How are you? I'm Holly Meyer, I'm Circuit Judge, first division, I'm running for reelection.
Right, I know.
Been your judge for ten years, I do the civil cases, I do a lot of worshiping cases, so you may have heard my name.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
How many divisions are there, because up there's care buyers, disreaches?
So it's, it's kinda confusing right now, there's four divisions.
Okay.
And, and, uh, they're all contested races this time. So I, I'm in the first division, and I do the civil cases, the wills, trusts, probates, corporations, car wrecks, and all the city litigation. That's all, um, the things that come to my court.
Well, we've got, I put my mom in there. And when we bought her house.
Uh-huh.
We have it in all three, with, uh, my mom, my stepdad, and my brother. So she's winning the nurse's home, and they live over five years, they can't take it, but mom will turn their name off, you know, right?
If her name is still on it, I'm not sure that she'd make a house in that state. Took her name off of it, then she'd be outside of that little cave, you know, a little back period, if her name is still on it, she's probably not outside of that, it's bad. So, um, but there's two things you wanna think about when you're passing that little property.
Mm.
You wanna think about the tax implications of it, because you wanna get the step up a debt, it's not usually a good idea for real estate in your children's names, because it costs them tax-wise a couple of big taxes. For instance, if mom bought it for fifty thousand, now it's worth two hundred thousand, which could be, that's a hundred fifty thousand dollars in taxes. Whereas if she gives it to you when she dies, you take it at the current value, it'll be two hundred thousand, so you sell it for two hundred and one thousand dollars, and you don't have to tax it on that. So you wanna talk to your tax man first, um, and then if you just wanna be gay, so you go to the telecom fair, or if you wanna, or pass some things through.
Oh, okay.
Which may be more complicated than state planning, lots of times people don't think about the tax side, so you should, think about, think about both of those things.
Yes.
How are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
I'm very well, Holly Meyer, I'm a Circuit Judge, I've been Circuit Judge for ten years. Before that, I was a prosecuting attorney, for, and deputy prosecutor, ran it for twenty-seven years, lots of, uh, time in the courtroom, murders, rapes, drug trafficking, those kind of cases, and now I was the Circuit Judge, I do the civil cases. I do, uh, the worshiping cases as well, most things I've done in court, but... The Hunter Biden case, that I typically do, corporations, wills, trusts, estates, uh, the civil litigation, car wrecks, the election disputes, all those things come together.
Hunter Biden was stupid.
Yeah, well, all you had to do is treat him the same as you treat everybody else.
Why not?
That's all you have to do.
Too much talk, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, it was, there was a lot of talk, I mean, it's, uh... If you know my reputation, I'm pretty much a straight arrow, it's not based on who you are, how powerful you are, whether you have the reach in your lawyers, whether you're Republican or Democrat, you know, those things about it, maybe, that's the law, having five and two. Mr. Drager?
Yeah.
I'm Holly Meyer, I'm a Circuit Judge, how are you?
Good.
I'm running for reelection, I've been a Circuit Judge for ten years, before that prosecutor, deputy prosecutor, for twenty-seven years, actually. So lots and lots of trial work, uh, rapes, murders, drugs, uh, now that I'm a Circuit Judge, I do civil things, I do all the worshiping litigation, so I'm sure you may have heard my name in that regard. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's trust. You can, you're able to go over a hundred thousand dollars, you can start that party, that's what's helped me. So I hope that, I hope that my reputation, you know, cases in the whole of the city have been, doesn't matter whether you're Republican or Democrat, or right or left, or, you know, which side of the state you speak, you're on, questions whistle off. And that's what I, that's what I try to do, so there's been some wins and there's been some losses. Um, but you never have to guess why I do what I do, I can make detailed written, um, decisions, and if you've read any of them, uh, you know, I hope you'll see that they're based on the law, I'm not gonna do shit. I think that case settled. Um, so the, so the only question wa, uh, for the court on that case was, was the settlement reasonable? Um, and both sides were, you know, vehemently asking for it. What are they, they're supposed to do? I haven't, uh, I haven't been pretty to that, what happened afterwards, but if someone wants to bring that back to me, I'd be glad to address it. You bet, nice music. Hi. Hi. Hi ladies.
Hello.
There's some life of politics right here, before you start, do you? I'm making it, if I'm disrupted, please stop me. Hi, Holly Meyer. I'm Circuit Judge.
Okay.
I've been Circuit Judge for ten years, I do all the civil cases. Before that, I was deputy prosecutor, prosecutor for twenty-seven years. Lots and lots of time in the courtroom, lots and lots of period trials.
She got me, okay.
But very, so, the case is pretty straightforward, you're a parent, you know, you're a child.
Oh, I'm right, yes.
So, um, and for, uh...
Think you'll see these stickers, are.
I'm not there, I don't know, it's a bit, a lot of areas, where it's a case of law, it's all, if you're in civil, what's what?
That's very, yeah.
It's a really, it's a, it's a, it's a... Hi, hi, if you want to meet, there's lots of information on the case, I know, I mean, you've probably heard me getting like bitchy.
Okay, well.
Yeah, you, you know my style.
I know your style.
Been asking about it, so, Holly Meyer, I appreciate you supporting me, it's close in March, so, hopefully you guys have read some of my opinions, and, uh, actually, if you have any questions, I'll be there.
That's good, I think, everybody keeps saying one, you might get the water back if you can, your boat's off.
Mr. Rains, how are you?
Doing good, how are you?
You have this handy name tag, that works out really well for me. I'm Holly Meyer, I'm your Circuit Judge, I've been Circuit Judge for ten years, I do all the civil cases, wills, estates, probates, trusts, before that I was twenty-seven years prosecutor, deputy prosecutor, lots and lots of time in the courtroom, lots of trial experience. Have reputation for, just call it like I see it, based on the law and facts, I've done some worshiping cases, some for you, and some against you probably, did the MRID case, which ultimately settled, but, um, I think if you have been to my court, I have a reputation, I'm very transparent, follow the law, I don't care which side of the fight you're on, questions, what are the facts and experiences, so I have that reputation, basically, I hope you'll consider it. All right.
It's not an emergency, I just...
Well, I would be grateful, I would be impressed, so like, if I had enough, I would just say, I'm not good, so I wouldn't mind.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so it's five thirty, you're gonna start your thing? Pardon? Well, it's not a meeting, it's a hearing, you're gonna explain whatever your grants are, right? And you're gonna...
We're here this evening to have a hearing on the grant. And the grant is such that it is for addressing the community center and making renovations to it. And we're here to hear from the public what they would like done. It is a ninety-ten grant, meaning that the city would have to come up ten thousand and they would furnish ninety thousand. And I'll open it up to the floor. I would say this, there's a clipboard going around, and this is pertinent because it gives us attendance for this meeting, for response from the city. And if you would, just fill out your name and the items there so we can properly report that along with our grant application. It was for the building itself. Yeah, the building itself. Renovating the community center.
Brian, what assurance do you have that you're going to receive the grant?
None.
Same as you have with any other grant.
So then, where are we?
Right now, we're applying, you have to apply, or you'll never get it. No, we're in the process of applying. We're in the process of applying, this is part of the process. Sir? My... If somebody's watching, is this being broadcast or not?
It's on a live feed, but actually, you guys said you were gonna start recording these meetings, there should be a camera right here recording this. I mean, Bill has the camera.
I'm just saying, they may not hear you, you may have to come up to the podium to be able to hear.
Yeah, it'd be better if you came up, Jim, and just talked into it.
That's all, I'm just trying to make sure they...
And Bill was keeping track of their suggestions, right? Okay.
I suggest focusing on the bottom floor and getting it presentable to the public for functions and windows and the lower bathrooms. Get those ADA compliant.
Thank you, sir.
Gail, come on up.
So, I'm not dis... oh, sorry. I'm not discounting that we need to work on everything in the building, but given the fact that the little theater does performance there, it's very hard for the elderly to get up the stairs. And that's why we'd like to have the lift or an elevator to take everybody up there so that they could enjoy a building just like everybody else.
Well, I just, I can comment on this, Gail. No, come on up, Tommy, I'm just adding a comment. There was a rail chair on those stairs. No one could find the key for it, didn't seem so it was worked. It was actually taken out before Charlie took over the building. We thought it was down in a building somewhere, to my knowledge, it's not. I believe they got rid of it, when they got rid of it, it was scrapped, that it wasn't a working chair. But that might be an option for people to think about, instead of doing an elevator, at least doing a chair ride. Because you can get an elevator platform that will go up to. Just, that's what happened, the chair's gone, to my knowledge.
Anyway, what I was gonna say, suggest is, if we can possibly update that restaurant, rent it out, that'd start drawing revenue for that building. That's what I was gonna do.
That's a good idea. We do need a place for the restaurant that burned out. And I do think with the insurance money, they might be able to upgrade it. And we had brought that up to the council the last time, I don't know where people are at with it, but their insurance inspector was here just the other day and going through the restaurant, so...
They had handrails and they were moved, they were piped, I don't know.
But that one, it went all the way around, there was no reason to remove that one. They just did it 'cause, because nothing changed. The other ones I see, because they moved it up, they moved the stairs, but they had the material, they should replace them. And that's been allowed. And the bathrooms is definitely, can't do nothing, but it's not accessible.
Anybody else have things to say? Come right up, Carol.
Well, since I've done a few events up there, I kind of am familiar with the downstairs area and the upstairs area. If you put just a lift in at the stairway, then it's unusable for any type of event where someone's gotta carry anything heavy upstairs. For instance, on some of the craft shows that I had, we couldn't do the upstairs because people that had big wooden racks, et cetera, et cetera, had no way to get them upstairs, so that's one thing. The other thing is, the outdoors doesn't have proper lighting. And many of the electrical inside is in need of serious repair. But I do know that people could fall pretty easily outside because of the lighting.
Guys. Okay, and let me take back the chair idea, because if we're talking about ADA compliance, that chair actually comes up where the bathroom is, right there. So, the chair may not be a good idea to use at all. That may not work. Yeah, because where the chair would come out, there's a bathroom right there at the top of the stairs. I don't know if that, what we'd have to do to make that ADA compliant. If you're just gonna do the downstairs, you're all set, but I never thought the chair ends, that rail is right there where the bathroom starts. Any other comments or suggestions? Can you come right up here and talk, please?
My deal is the whole, got the whole building, but the bottom's not being done, we're not doing nothing on the bottom. The bottom's not making money. So why are we going upstairs? To make it look cool? And we can put theater downstairs. Can we not? Restaurant downstairs, theater, dance, anything. The building is huge downstairs. Let's get it running, before we start spending money for an elevator.
Okay. Any other suggestions? Comments, ideas?
I would add, comment on the bathrooms upstairs, if you did put an elevator or whatever, someone got up there and needed handicap access to a bathroom, they're gonna have to go back downstairs and still, if you just make one bathroom ADA, you ought to make both of them. Because if something is upstairs, we need to accommodate someone who has a handicap, that's what I, my opinion.
So if you're working on plumbing, you know, I could understand getting more plumbing done. But the building, the top and the bottom, there's space to accommodate everybody downstairs right now.
But like, like one individual brought out, they had a craft show and they wanted to use upstairs. If somebody needed the facility upstairs, it's hard for a normal person to use the bathrooms upstairs. They were, they were small from the get-go. I don't, that's the case, any of you are unaware. Bathrooms are no comparison to downstairs. Downstairs has much more room compared to the upstairs facilities.
How often is that upstairs used?
Again, it would be more if we had, if we had facilities.
How often is it used now?
That's, that's the objective, is to get it used more.
Okay. I'm just asking, I'm just curious. If they have craft, you said they have craft shows?
Craft show could not use it because of difficulties. Wedding reception.
No, the wedding reception they did downstairs, I think the only time they used it is actually when they did the play upstairs. Wow? Okay, I wasn't aware of that. I hate to ask you to come up, but you can't hear, especially you're from the back, sorry. Yeah, it's better if you do, because people need to... No, people at home really can't hear, it comes up real spotty.
Well, my question is, is the grant for upstairs and downstairs bathrooms, that's what the grant's for, or just upstairs?
It's for renovations of the building.
Just the building itself.
This hearing is to hear from the citizenry what they would like to see done with those funds for renovating the building.
Well, if you're gonna do upstairs, you might as well do downstairs, too, get all the bathrooms done. Because that downstairs is used three times more, I'm sure, upstairs, so if you're gonna do a grant, get upstairs and downstairs done, and just be done with it. That's my suggestion.
Is there a limit to the grant, Brian?
One hundred thousand is the limit.
All right.
And it's a ninety, and it's a ninety-ten. And there was, they'll furnish ninety, we furnish ten, the city. I've never heard of ninety-ten, but this one is.
They come in all sizes.
Okay.
They come in all sizes. Yeah, please, here's your mic, thanks.
If they're providing ninety, we can provide more than ten if we want to, can't we? I mean, if the, if the cost of run overrun, say, was one twenty or something, we could come up with thirty.
Exactly. We have to provide concrete information that we provided ten thousand to their ninety thousand. But we could put forty with their ninety, you know?
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Come on right up.
What else can the grant be used for? What, besides this building renovation, what else can this grant specifically be used for?
Well, it's for, it's for renovating different buildings. I mean, it wouldn't have to be that building, we could renovate a different building or additional building, but that's what it's aimed at, is to try and revitalize the city for more public use.
So no additional infrastructure, sewer system, anything like that?
It's not directed that way, not this grant. It's connected to, actually has one part to tourism, so...
So only building renovation, correct?
Again, there may be other items, I don't want to misquote, the grant is kinda long.
I'm just kinda wondering if a hundred thousand dollars towards a building that's kind of seldom used at the time would be really worth it? If the build, if the grant can be used for something else in our community that would be more useful to the citizens, that might need to be explored. That's a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. If you can only get the grant for a building renovation, I understand that, but if it's used in some way else that could be more beneficial to our citizens, that needs to be explored.
As brought out this evening, there's talk about a restaurant opening up downstairs. If a restaurant opened downstairs, that would greatly promote more use, daily use. It would change the whole dynamics.
I understand that you're very pro building renovation.
But, but it's hard to have a restaurant when you don't have ADA compliant restrooms to go along with it. And he, the mayor's pointed out that the people may be using the insurance money to renovate the kitchen area. Is that correct?
Yeah, they expressed an interest in renting it, possibly. Because they're still looking for space.
If, if they're going to invest that into the building, I was thinking, again, it's one opinion out of two thousand plus, that if we, as the council, would get your guys' opinion, with some have expressed opinion about the bathrooms being ADA, that would assist them in being able to go in and renovate the kitchen, and then have bathrooms that would be compliant and allow them to open. I mean, is that help with your question about utility of the building?
I didn't have a question about the utility of the building, I just wondered if there was anything else that the grant could be utilized for besides the building renovation. Thank you.
Your supposition that the building is not used a lot is not true. In fact, if those, if they were, if the, if the building was repaired and taken care of, it probably would be used on a daily basis by some other, one group or another.
That would be great, sure.
And it has been in the past, and that, we're looking forward to that happening again.
Dan, Dan Robinson? Yeah, I know he's here. How much is the building used downstairs? I know there's, what, a dance group that uses it?
Can you come up, Dan, and talk here?
Boy Scouts.
Okay, go do the mic, please.
Yeah, we have dance, exercise, Boy Scout, there's also a new chess club that's around, and we're trying to get them some access to it as well. Monthly meetings, yep. Pipeline's coming in February.
Who's doing monthly meetings?
Boating and fishing, yep. Yep, little theater, and Amberly Martin's mom, she did that play recently. So there's play stuff going on as well.
How much is upstairs used, Dan?
Not nearly as much as upstairs, but my understanding is, if it's, if the upstairs is accessible, so if we have a handicap accessible going upstairs, that the bathrooms also have to be handicapped accessible upstairs, is my understanding. There was, there are some people saying that, you know, we probably can only, you know, we could have one bathroom that's handicap accessible downstairs, and that would be okay. And, and it's not looking like that's a possibility. So, yeah. So, you know, I think if it gets renovated and we do some things to it, we plan on doing a bunch of stuff to it this fall, when things slow down in other areas, that it can be used, it's gonna be used. People are using it, so...
And I'd like to add, without bathrooms, the elevator's no good. I think you have to start somewhere, and if we can get a grant, which the ten percent, I believe, the city itself can work, use its employees, its equipment to help pay for that ten percent. You can subtract your labor from your city, so it may not end up costing the city anything, except for additional, what you go over that.
Right, and we have arpa phones.
We've got to start with bathrooms, and then we have extra money.
Yeah, we have arpa phones that we were talking about using for the elevator, and then we could do the grant for the bathrooms and such, so there's, you know, different avenues that we can take.
That is correct, it may not be a hundred thousand. Well, we, that's why we're getting suggestions, and we submit them with priorities. That's why we want to hear different opinions. Because we have to list them, this is what most people said was the number one on the building. This is number two of things for the building, let's say, we say, number one was the ADA-approved bathroom upstairs, downstairs. Let's say, number two was the fogged-up windows that are distracting and you can't see, and, and some people say that makes worse glare. I don't understand that, but whatever. And let's say, three, we could put an elevator, but the elevator cost is gonna be a large chunk. And what they'll do is, they look at our priority, and they look what they're gonna give us, they may not give us a whole hundred. They say, okay, your top priority, we will give you seventy-five thousand, okay? But we would come up with a ten percent of that seventy-five thousand, and they would give the additional. But again, if we get the whole hundred thousand, then it would be ninety thousand and ten thousand from us.
Can you, please come up and talk? Can you talk into the mic, please?
Gotta turn the mic on, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Didn't know it was gonna be a test. My question is, is there anything in that building that needs to be replaced, like a heat, air, roof, anything like that?
Mine, again...
That could be a major expense.
Dan, do you know of anything that's lacking? You stepped outside again. The question was, is there anything lacking on the AC units, heating, mechanical-wise, for that building? I thought that was the case, but I wanted to hear from Dan.
Seal, can you come up, please?
When we were working upstairs in the far room, the little theater group, when we were putting together a lot of our stuff, getting it organized, a lot of the sockets up in that room were not working, the electric sockets, has that been fixed? Okay, I, yeah. Because we only found one socket up there to start up the fan, because it was so warm up there. Okay, thank you.
Any other suggestions, questions?
What's the timeline on this grant, as far as we have to get in? And in what way we know if we have it?
That's a good question. The acknowledgement of receiving it may take a while. We're trying to get it in before the end of the month. We do have a little more time, but not much. Yes, that's the deadline. If we, if we went to the deadline, it's October seventeenth is the cutoff.
Are the windows all, are they just bad, or are they just ugly?
They've lost the gas between the panes, and therefore, they've, they've fogged up, and they have like a buildup in them.
You can't paint a mural over them just to look good. I'm just saying it.
I guess, that's, that's an idea. It is an idea. Yeah.
Any other suggestions, comments, questions? You do know that those windows are expensive, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I need, I have windows thirty-eight by fifty, I think, it's a thousand bucks.
Dan, do you get a quote?
They look like they're painted. If you, if you do get some, can you get two for me?
To get some idea of that, Dan's working on that on three different glass companies. I think one Batesville, one Highland, and one in Mountain Home. Three different ones to get quotes. Yes, you're absolutely right, they're very expensive. I, I...
I agree.
I agree, yeah.
I just wanna know, are we gonna be able to have, like, certified plumbers in our town, certified electricians doing the work? Or is this gonna be put out for bid and have the same people that are really overcharging the city?
I imagine it'll be put out for bid.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll go out for bid.
All right, I'm just, you know, are we gonna be able to utilize some, some of our actual citizens? Our really good construction workers, our plumbing contractors, our electricians. I think we'd be well-suited as a city to use some of our citizens, because we may get discounts by citizens if they're certified. I'm not saying just hire anybody, I'm saying check their credentials and make sure that they really know what they're doing, right?
Right.
And, but, if you have people that want to give back to their community, they may do that at a lesser fee if you don't chastise them. I mean, that's, that's how it works. People give and give and give unless somebody says, hey, don't do that. You know, I just think we would be better served if we really paid attention to our citizens and got some, some help.
The way the grants are laid out and performed, you put them out for bid and you have to take the lowest bid. It kinda ties our hands a little more than if it was us putting a bid out for the city without a grant to do work. There is law in Arkansas that we can have favorite son and actually favor someone who is in the city. I'm not saying we can go way out of line and give somebody something that's twenty percent higher, a favorite son status. What I'm saying is, if it's a few thousand dollars and it was just the city doing it, we can go to a higher bid. But when it comes down to a grant, as White River Economic Development District will tell you, if you call over and talk to her, the grant has to be bid and you have to take the lowest bid. Yes, sir.
Can you come up here, Ray, please?
You do not have to take the lowest bid.
You can argue that with White Water, White River.
No, Brian, let me finish. You have to take, according to the law, the lowest and best bid, okay? And within your bid specs, you put parameters in, and that will tell you to determine what is the lowest and best bid. You do have a little bit of leeway. But bids are funny, in that you do not negotiate the amount of a bid. You cannot negotiate, once the bid is in, that's it, there's no negotiation. If we have federal funds involved in this, there is no favorite son or local preference in federal contracting. So, it all stems on preparing the bid specs in a proper way. That is, with the terms and conditions of how to do business with the city, the license and bonding requirements, the start time, the date to finish. All that has to be put into bid spec, and all your bidders have to bid on the same spec, okay? Now, if you choose to put an alternate, you can have an alternate, but that only can be considered if your, if your first bids are no good. Then you can go to an alternate. But there's no law that says you have to take the low bid. You have to take the lowest and best. I spent forty years in government contracting, I spent a lot of time working with the state of Arkansas. I'll be more than happy to help you with bid specs.
And you ought to let him.
Thank you.
And can't, Ray, can't the city reject a bid?
Yes.
Can't they reserve the right to reject?
That, you put that in your bid spec, that you have the right to reject any and all bids. You have that right, absolutely. Thank you, Brad.
Okay, anything else on the grants? Any other suggestions people want to put in? Can people send to City Hall any other suggestions, or if there's people out there watching that didn't show up, can they write you and just send you ideas on how they want to see the money spent or anything like that?
That would be fine.
I mean, I don't know if people will do that, but everybody that's out there watching, if you're a resident of Horseshoe Bend.
I would, I would prefer if they want to do that, that's fine. But hopefully by the end of the week. It gives them plenty of time to write it up and get it here. Because we are trying to meet a deadline, get all of our ducks in a row.
All right, so the deadline is gonna be the end of the week then. So if you have a suggestion and you're not able to be here tonight, you've gotta, you probably ought to walk it in here and give it to one of the girls, preferably tomorrow or the day after, so that Brian's got it to take it to White River, get this grant written. I guess I want to thank everybody for their suggestions and ideas. I know we're a little bit after six, but does anybody want to take a three-minute break to go to the bathroom, take a breath, and then we'll start our regular meeting? Is everybody okay with that? All right, so we'll start at five after six.
Thank you all. If anybody hasn't signed showing they were here for the hearing, I appreciate if you would fill it out on that clipboard. Thank you.
Okay, folks, I guess everybody's back here now. If you can take your seats, please, we'll go ahead with the meeting here. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, please. Let me do a roll call, please. Councilmember Yancey.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Hilliker.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Rains.
Here.
Councilmember Vickers.
Here.
Councilmember Dawson.
Here.
Councilmember Draper.
Here.
Councilmember Mayor. Sorry, Mayor. Here. Okay, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, please heal our hearts in a heavy time in our country with the loss of so many wonderful people. Guide our spirit, our minds, and our souls into a brighter future of brotherhood and togetherness. Help us come together and understand our purpose and our aim. Amen. All right, so before we do our council minutes, I don't really want to hold Judge Myers up. I'd like to ask her if she wants to come up and say a couple of words to the people. She's been here for quite a while. If you haven't had a chance to talk to her, please talk to her, grab her on the way out the door. Judge Meyer.
Good evening. I hope none of you ever have to be in Circuit Court. But if you do have to be in Circuit Court, there's something very important happening in your life. Someone that you love may have died, perhaps tragically. You may be in a monetary dispute with someone. You may be in an election dispute, or there may be a city issue. Because I've gotten a few city issues from Horseshoe Bend. And if you do, on the day that you are in court, you will care very deeply who the circuit judge is. As you sit here tonight, you may think, oh, that's never gonna be me. But it can happen in the blink of an eye and you can have a material, life and death, important decision that needs to be made on a matter that's very near and dear to you. And on that day, you will care. I am from Heber Springs. I, my family went to, I went to school at Hendrix where I met my husband. When I went to law school, he went to medical school. He's a family practice doctor. When he graduated from medical school, he did a residency in Little Rock. During that time, I worked for the prosecuting attorney in Pulaski County. That year, they had sixty-three homicides. I became the senior deputy prosecuting attorney doing homicides down there. Worked very hard, a lot of serious violent crime litigation. Have a record of representing the victims of crime, the people of the state of Arkansas. When he got out of residency, we moved back to Heber Springs. If you've been to Heber Springs, there's a brick building across the street from Walmart, and we built that. So I'm a small business owner. He practiced medicine out of the front. I practiced law out of the back. Also became a deputy prosecutor in Heber Springs, served for twenty-seven years as deputy prosecutor. Again, trying lots and lots of drug cases, homicides, rapes, sexual assaults. I've served on the Arkansas Supreme Court as a special justice on the Arkansas Supreme Court. I've served on the Arkansas Sentencing Commission where I was an advocate for truth in sentencing. So that when you tell a jury, this man's gonna do ten years, you really mean ten years, as opposed to what you really meant was eighteen months. I've also served on the Access to Justice Commission, which is designed to help people that don't have lawyers, don't have a lot of resources, have a voice when they have an important matter in Circuit Court. I have prosecuted long enough that I've gotten the call to go down to Cummins, to the death chamber. And people that I have prosecuted and put on death row watch their sentences be implemented. So I've been, all those years as deputy prosecutor, twenty-five years, twenty-seven actually as prosecutor and deputy prosecutor. I'm now the circuit judge. When I became the circuit judge, my name was on all the indictments. So I had charged everyone with the crimes that they were charged with. For that reason, I didn't become the criminal judge, even though that's where a lot of my experience was. I also had many years of private practice doing oil and gas work, doing family law, and doing complex civil litigation contracts, et cetera. So for that reason, I went into the Civil Division where I currently do all of the wills, trusts, estates, all of the probate matters. I do corporations. I do, if there's a car wreck, if someone builds their garage five feet over on your property line and you want them to have to move their garage, you have an election dispute, if you have a government dispute, if you have a city dispute, those cases come to me. Many of the people in this room have been in my courtroom. You know what my style is. I try to be very kind and courteous to people. I'm also a very tough judge. And I hope that my reputation that you have seen demonstrated in my courtroom is, I don't ask you if you're a Republican or Democrat. I don't ask you which side of a dispute you're on. I don't care if you're rich and you bring in New York lawyers like Hunter Biden, or if you, or you are not a person with great resources. None of those things matter. The law of the state of Arkansas is the same. I hope my reputation is that I'm very transparent. My opinions come out in writing. If you have a disagreement with one of them, I would ask you first to read that opinion. I hope you'll find that it's fact-based and that it's law-based. And because that's what I'm called upon to do, that's my job, is uphold the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arkansas. Try to be very transparent. I try to be very hardworking. Try to be very efficient and try to be courteous. And I work hard to make you proud of me. So I hope that you'll consider voting for me. The election is in March. And I very much appreciate your support. And I'll be here to the end of the meeting and even after. And if you have a question that I can answer, I can't discuss specific cases with you, but if you have a question that I can answer, I'd be delighted to visit with you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Okay, going forward with the meeting. Reviewing appeal of council minutes.
Meeting minutes, City Council meeting August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Mayor Delair called the meeting to order at six PM. Roll call was taken. All council members were present except Councilmember Booth. The mayor, recorded treasurer, and city attorney were also present. All stood for the Pledge of Allegiance and Mayor Delair performed an invocation prayer. The meeting minutes from the City Council meeting July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five were read by the recorded treasurer. Motion to accept the minutes was made by Councilmember Hilliker and seconded by Councilmember Miller. Minutes were approved by voice vote. Treasuries report, the recorded treasurer made comments about expenses versus revenues for July. The Izard County Sheriff's Office had neglected to bill us in June, so we paid double in July. A motion to accept the treasurer's report was made by Councilmember Draper and seconded by Councilmember Rains. The report was approved by voice vote. Committee reports, motion to accept committee reports was made by Councilmember Draper and seconded by Councilmember Miller. The reports were approved on voice vote. Old business, Mayor Delair presented his veto of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash oh-nine. He stated that the ordinance violated state statutes. After some discussion, it was recommended that the ordinance be rewritten. A motion was made by Councilmember Draper and seconded by Councilmember Miller to let the veto stand. The city attorney advised that no action was necessary and the motion was withdrawn. Mr. Sipe will help draft a new ordinance. Mayor Delair presented his veto of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eleven. He believes that parliamentary law gives him full voting authority in meetings. A motion was made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Draper to override the veto. The motion passed by a roll call vote, seven to zero. Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eighteen was read for the third time. This ordinance confirms that the City Council has full authority over the finances and assets of the city. A motion was made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Draper to approve the measure. The motion passed by roll call vote, seven to zero. New business, a motion was made by Councilmember Hilliker and seconded by Councilmember Miller to accept the resignation of War Two Position Two Councilmember Tony Booth. The motion passed by voice vote. There was a discussion about a replacement for the vacant council seat. The recorded treasurer informed council that Sheila Turner had applied. A member of the audience, Patricia Pedalat, asked if she could apply. She was invited to the podium to state her qualifications. Sheila Turner was then given the same opportunity. Sheila had previously run for this position. A motion was made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Draper to approve Sheila for this seat. The motion passed with six votes. Councilmember Vickers abstained. Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash nineteen was read for the first time by the recorded treasurer. It defines a policy for the recording of public meetings. Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-nine regarding applying for a fun park grant was read by the recorded treasurer. Councilmember Miller explained how the grant would be used for playground equipment in a ballpark at Veterans Park. A motion was made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Rains to approve the resolution. The motion passed by voice vote. Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash twenty was read for the first time by the recorded treasurer. This ordinance makes the chair of the Finance Committee a signatory on all checking accounts. A motion was made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Vickers to suspend the rules and read the ordinance for a second time by Title Only. The motion passed unanimously by roll call vote. The ordinance was read by Title Only by the recorded treasurer. A motion was made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Yancey to suspend the rules and read the ordinance a third time by Title Only. The motion passed unanimously by roll call vote. The ordinance was read again by Title Only by the recorded treasurer. A motion was made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Yancey to approve the ordinance. The motion passed unanimously by roll call vote. A motion was made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Yancey to approve the emergency clause of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash twenty. The motion passed unanimously by roll call vote. There was a discussion about the ability of the city to grant waivers, deferrals, and payment plans to property owners for the amenity fee. The city attorney stated that the city could not grant any of these without offering the same to every property owner. A motion was made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Draper to move the matter to Finance Committee for further discussion. Forgot, the motion passed by voice vote. I missed that, sorry. The issue of road repair material was discussed. The street department budget has been used up, but there are a couple of good weather months left to do repairs. A motion was made by Councilmember Hilliker and seconded by Councilmember Draper to approve up to an additional fifteen thousand from the Street Department Operating Fund for Additional Road Reaggregate. Motion passed on voice vote. The street department needed to repair a large tractor. It required a bearing axle and housing and a lot of labor. The amount owed is fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. It was proposed by the street department to take funds from the Leachade Funds, street capital assets. A motion to approve the transaction was made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Dawson. Motion was approved by voice vote. There was a discussion about the need for leak detection devices for the water department. The water system is currently less than fifty percent efficient. A motion was made by Councilmember Dawson and seconded by Councilmember Miller to approve the purchase of a quattro leak correlator system for up to thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars plus tax using water department depreciation funds. The motion passed by voice vote. The city is a defendant in lawsuit thirty-three C V dash twenty-five dash one seventeen. The city attorney is unable to provide this defense and the municipal league has deemed it a contract dispute which has not fallen into their bucket. A motion was made by Councilmember Draper and seconded by Councilmember Vickers to hire Beckett Building's link keys for this defense. The motion passed seven to zero on roll call vote. Councilmember Hilliker had departed the meeting early. Public comments, Uriah Mead asked the city attorney to explain to everyone the legality of the city paying for the legal defense. Mr. Sipe took exception and asked if Uriah thought that he, Mr. Sipe, would allow the council to do something illegal. Questions were asked regarding the lawsuits, which were mostly deflected for legal reasons. Councilmember Miller suggested people watch the video from the council meeting where the contracts and questions were not accepted. Carol Spencer asked about DVD recording of meetings. Mr. Sipe stated that it was pointless in twenty-twenty-five to have to provide DVDs when the recording is available online. Cindy Parsons asked, requested that all council members have their microphones on so everyone watching remotely can hear them. Mike Mead informed council that the signage at North Lake is outdated and inaccurate. It was noted that this should be addressed by Parks and Recreation. A motion to adjourn was made by Councilmember Dawson, seconded by Councilmember Draper. Motion passed by voice vote.
Do we have any questions, additions, or concerns to the minutes, other than the one motion passed by voice vote?
Right. There was some place where it should have been a, a percentage, and I, it looks like I had an ampersand, sorry. Those two, those two things.
I didn't see that one. Do you remember where it was? That one I didn't catch, sorry.
It was on the third page right here. Should have been a percent.
Okay.
It was on the second page.
Third page. Okay. Any questions? Other additions, comments, deletions? Okay, do we have a motion to accept the minutes as read with the additions, corrections?
I so moved.
Brian makes the motion. Do we have a second? Jeanette seconds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say the same. Minutes have passed. Read the minutes for the special meeting, August fourteenth.
Meeting minutes, special meeting at City Council, August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Mayor DeLair called the meeting to order at seven forty-three P.M. Roll call vote was taken by the recorded treasurer. Present, Councilmember Yancey, Councilmember Miller, Councilmember Reins, Councilmember Vickers, and Councilmember Dawson. Also present, Mayor DeLair and recorded treasurer, Bill Vanderpass. Absent, City Attorney Brad Sipe, Councilmember Booth, Alderwoman Hilliker, and Councilmember Draper. Number one, slope mower, mower. A motion was made by the council, by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Dawson to approve up to twenty-five thousand dollars for purchase of a Toro thirty-five hundred D Sidewinder mower. Motion passed unanimously by roll call vote. A motion was made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Dawson to use freed-up funds for the Toro motor. Motion passed by voice vote. A motion was made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Vickers to accept the depreciated insurance check and use it to partially rebuild the shed and retain the excess for Parks and Recreation use. Motion passed unanimously by roll call vote. A motion was made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Dawson to make a twenty-five hundred dollar counter offer against the proposed settlement for case thirty-three C V dash twenty-four dash twenty-five. The motion, motion passed unanimously by roll call vote. A motion was made by Councilmember Dawson and seconded by Councilmember Miller to proceed with installation of ADA-compliant concrete and railings per proposals solicited and received by Raul Johnston. The motion passed by voice vote. A motion was made by Councilmember Dawson and seconded by Councilmember Miller to authorize payment and appeal to the Municipal League for representation for lawsuit thirty-three C V dash twenty-five dash one seventeen. The mayor stated that the whole council was not being sued, just certain named ones for their actions in City Council. Councilmember Miller took exception for this comment and stated that if they are being sued for their actions as council members, then they cannot be sued as individuals. Motion passed unanimously by roll call vote. A motion was made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Vickers to set aside thirty thousand dollars from freed-up funds for legal representation on thirty-three C V dash twenty-five dash one seventeen if the Municipal League declined the appeal to represent. The motion passed unanimously by roll call vote. A motion to adjourn was made by Councilmember Dawson and seconded by Councilmember Miller. Motion passed by voice vote.
Okay. Any corrections, additions? Done? All right. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as read?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Travis makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Sean seconds. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say the same. Minutes are accepted. Yeah, I guess. Come up here and talk to the mic, please.
I was just wondering, is it not more transparent to be specific where the funds are coming from, rather than to say simply freed-up funds?
That is, that's a fund.
That is, the name of the fund is freed-up funds. It's ARPA. They were originally, came in under federal monies. And when we renamed them, we literally called it freed-up funds because we moved that money in a way that the Municipal League freed up the funds for us from the restrictions. So we actually named it that. So that is being...
Okay, it sounded vague. Thank you.
It does, but that's what we called it. We just called it what it was.
I just want to quick, make a quick statement on the handicap accessible for the pavilion. That project is started to get underway this week, weather permitting. I know we haven't had rain for two months, but it's a kind of a catch-22, which do you want to do? But it's like, it's going to get started this week.
All right, so we pass those. Moving right along. Treasuries report.
So at the Finance Committee meeting last, well, two weeks ago, I mentioned that was kind of a strange-looking red flag that the revenue and the expenses had such a big gap, where normally they're very close. And I could account for about half of it because at, at the end of the month, all the funds come into the general fund, and then they get dispersed properly. So like the credit card, when people pay by credit card on the water department, it goes into the general fund first, and then it gets dispersed to the water department. And what happened last month, there was some issue with it, and so it didn't actually get applied until the first of the month, instead of the last day of the month. And so we didn't have that money in, but we actually still put it out. So it looks like a big discrepancy, and everything else looked right. In fact, the sales tax revenues were actually two thousand dollars more than the month before, so. But it was a hard one to find, so.
All right, has everybody had a chance to look at the treasurer's report? Did we lose Brian? All right, I'm going to give him just a second here. All right, well, Brian's gone before we accept the treasurer's report. Do people want to look down through the committee reports? If you guys haven't looked at them, just to make sure you've seen them and everything's okay, and we'll vote on those as soon as Brian gets back.
Can I make an update on the library issue? The electrical outlets have been fixed outside, and the men's restroom has been fixed. So that was marked off.
Okay, thank you.
And that came from Megan, so.
Okay, Brian, we're at the treasurer's report. We waited for you. Do we have a, a motion to accept the treasurer's report as shown to us and as read?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Pick one.
Pick one.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say the same. All right, treasurer's report is accepted. All right, while you were out, Brian asked people to look at committee reports. Did, did you get a chance to look at committee reports?
Yes, sir, I already have.
Okay, so everybody's seen the committee reports. Any suggestions, additions, or deletions to the committee reports? All right, do I have a motion to accept the committee reports? Donnie makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Brian seconds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say the same. Committee reports have been accepted. Okay, moving into old business. Right, so twenty-five, twenty. All right, so veto of ordinance twenty-five, twenty. Ordinance twenty-five, twenty to add to the city of Horseshoe Bend Finance Committee Chair as a signatory on all city checking accounts. First, the council has not now or ever demonstrated an emergency to the effect of health, peace, or safety on this to push it through. And who is this individual actually representing? Because Chris in the Public Works Department actually represents me as choosing him to be my third, second signature, however you want to say it. And you really need to be in the hospital or on vacation to use that extra signature. There should never been an emergency to produce a check. I mean, we're a city. We're not a hospital. So I don't see why we have to have four people that sign checks. And if Mr. Vanderpass wants his own signature in his absence, I believe that would be fine, if Sean's going to represent him. However, the ordinance doesn't state that that's what he's doing. The city's existed for over fifty years with three signatories. No appropriate reason has been given for this, and I don't see a need for this now. If this is because that I have not signed checks, I'm investigating for charges, then the council, again, is trespassing into the administrative branch of government, which they have no authority to actually do that. And for the best interest of the city, I see no reason to add a fourth signatory person, especially when their exact role as to when and what they will sign hasn't really been spelled out. Any discussion?
Have you got your investigation done that you were doing on this guy to get him paid?
No, I haven't. That's still in process. I don't get to control that. I'm not doing the investigation.
Chris was signing the checks, but there was a time that you, that you could not be found or contacted to be here to sign, and Bill and Chris signed the checks. And you got upset and went at Chris and said that you signed the checks, but...
I asked Chris not to sign checks if I'm available, and, and I am available. The fact that I'm not in the building doesn't mean I'm not available.
Well, it was a payday, and the checks needed to be signed.
If it was a payday, I was here. There's never been a payday. I have not been here to sign checks, ever, in two and a half years.
That's not what I was told.
Well, you may be told whatever you want to, but I've never missed a payday in two and a half years. In fact, I haven't taken a vacation in two and a half years.
Well, if you're not in charge of the investigation, who is?
I believe it's the state police. I mean, without going into a ton of this, I mean, it's interesting that, that everybody's so upset about me holding this check, but I've signed checks for two and a half years, and I pulled this check. You seem to feel that I did it just because I had nothing else to do, or that I wanted to do this. You know, I did this for a valid reason, and that's why I pulled the check. Now, the other checks I have actually signed. And I have talked with Brad about two of the other checks, whether I should sign them or not. He's informed me two of the checks that I should sign, and I will indeed sign those. But on this one, I don't believe I should sign it until we know exactly what happened.
So he did a job, and the check was cut, and Bill signed it, and you did not. Is this not also the same contractor that is supposed to be doing the Boy Scout building?
Well, he said he was going to put a bid in on the Boy Scout building, but I think you're going to find that we have a number of bids for the Boy Scout building.
So when did we, as a council, get to see those bids, or see them open?
Well, what I did is emailed Bill and asked him to put an advertisement in the paper requesting the bids. I believe Uriah has bought some bids tonight, and as soon as that ad's in the paper for a week, we'll have those bids. I believe the ad says we'll open those bids at the Finance Committee meeting, and we'll look at who the bids are and what they're going to do them for, as far as...
How come we haven't had the opportunity to be present when the sealed bids are open? We get copies of them in our packet. We're not there to see them when they're open.
Well, you're going to be there to see them when you're open. What are you talking about? I just said you're going to open them at the Finance Committee.
Now we get to see them be open, but the two and a half years you've been in office, we've never known.
We didn't do sealed bids before. We did open bids. This is the first time we've done sealed bids. Before, we did open bids. We let it known that we were looking for bids, and people put bids in. And that's how we did it. We didn't do it as a sealed bid thing.
But sealed bids are required, sir. Sealed bids are required at a certain amount, and you just disregarded it, sir. You did. They absolutely are required, and you didn't do them.
This particular contractor also is one of two that answered the advertisement for the long cart shed being rebuilt. There was only two bids come in, and there's twelve thousand dollars difference between those two bids. And I don't blame a gentleman who has not been paid since, was it March? He did the work. I believe it was March he did the work, and he still hasn't had that check signed for him. And he's hesitant to do any more work for the city until he gets paid for what he did back in March. That's one reason that it's difficult to understand how the investigation that was launched sometime. I don't know, March? You started the investigation?
March, we held the check back and started questioning the contractor on the receipts that he was trying to say what he bought, what he didn't buy, what he actually did as far as the construction and the quality of the work that he did.
So if you ask somebody to come in and do this work, you describe it to them, you give them what is to be done, and you ask them to give you a bid, they give you a bid, and you accept that bid as a contract. You then expect every contractor to come back and give you all kinds of details, how much material you use, how many hours you put in. I understand you ought to inspect the finished product. Did the work get done? If the work got done and you accepted the contract, you should pay him. I've never heard where you take a contract and then go back and nitpick with the guy about how much material he used, how many hours he was here, because he gave you a, a bid for a finished project.
Right, it wouldn't cost plus hourly.
It wouldn't cost, yeah, it wasn't time and material.
This isn't about that check, and it's not about that investigation. It's about a veto that I wrote on adding a fourth signatory person. Now, you can vote to override this veto if you want to. That's my veto. I don't believe we need a fourth person. The city's never had one for a long period of time. We're not done discussion, Bill. So the focus is the veto and this ordinance, twenty, twenty-five, twenty, not the check.
I understand that's your opinion, but it's that exact situation that precipitated this action by the council, because the council is responsible for the finance of the city, the property of the city, and the personal property of the city. The council is responsible for that. As such, the council is, is take this action in order to save the city twelve thousand dollars between the only two bids we got.
This isn't about saving twelve thousand dollars. This is about putting a fourth signature on the signature page. That's what it's about.
I'm sorry you don't understand the logic, sir. I, I tried to explain it, that, how it went.
Well, the question is, okay, if he's on there, then who does he represent? Does he represent Bill as the second signature? Because Chris represents me, and the reason I told Chris not to sign that check was you were pushing him to sign it. There's things on that bill that don't add up. Now, that's been turned over to the authorities. How long is it going to take the authorities to do that? I don't have any control over that. That's up to the police.
Let's take the hypothetical. Let's say that is the fact, there is something nefarious. I don't agree with that, but let's just do a hypothetical. We sign, we give him the forty-eight hundred, then he's still going to be prosecuted, and we should maybe recoup the money, if you think there's something nefarious. Is that true or false, Brad?
I think we're kind of getting into weeds with it, but...
Well, we are, we are in weeds on this. But, you know, going, going back to, to your question, what, what exactly is, is your question?
Question is...
Can the city get restitution?
Restitution.
It's, it's kind of like you're saying, okay, it's okay, let's go ahead and pay this, and if they are, if they've done something illegal and, you know, stolen from us essentially, then we'll get the money back when it gets prosecuted. Well, there's no guarantee they'll ever pay restitution.
Right.
And I would tell any of y'all, just like I would tell Bill, or, you know, anybody that I'm obligated, any one of y'all that I'm obligated to give legal advice to, and the mayor, if you, and, you know, in your heart of hearts, if you think there's some criminal activity afoot, you know, you know, go with that. I'm not going to tell him to sign a check when he believes there's something... you know, go with that, I'm not gonna tell him to sign a check when he believes there's something nefarious going on. He says he's got some proof, and he has, he's contacted the state police, he's contacted Drew Smith. I can tell you that, I think I want to tell you that, to be transparent. None of it is FOI-able at this point, so for everybody wanting to FOI, you're not gonna get any of that information, because it is an open investigation. But he is doing what's been asked of him, and, you know, I don't know. I don't know if there's something there or not, but he's, he's got enough information that nobody's just telling him, we don't wanna hear that, we don't wanna see that.
So the contractor did the work for the price that he asked for, and we're not gonna pay him the price?
It's not about doing work, it's about materials, isn't it about materials?
It's about a lot of things.
It's about a lot of things.
Okay, it's about a lot of things. What's it really about? As the mayor, do I have a right, if I see something wrong, to stop that behavior? And to report it to the authorities? That's what I did. So if you're telling me this ordinance is only to put somebody on as a signatory to go around my signature, then I think my veto should stand, 'cause that's unacceptable. Now, if you're telling me you want Sean as a signature for Bill, so if Bill goes back up to Wisconsin and he's gone for thirty days, and you want Sean to sign for him, you have a right to do that. Each of us have a right to have a signatory. But I'm told...
I was also told we could have a fourth signature, period.
But I don't think that allows you to go around me when I pull the check for a valid reason. See, that's the problem right there. You have felt that, well, the council can just do whatever they want. You can't in this situation, this involves a criminal situation. But you can, if you wanna overturn the veto, go ahead. I mean, you have a right to do that, but you're... I didn't say anything about... Come up here and talk, come up here and talk. Come up here and talk, this is not about sealed bids, it's not about this stuff. Let's stop changing the thing here. This is about... No, this is a...
The roofing, the roofing company that we hired, the city hired, no competitive bids whatsoever. Three hundred and so, you don't wanna talk about it, right?
I, no, I don't, because it has nothing to do with this.
Exactly.
This has to do with a bill that a contractor...
Dan, Dan, did you take the mic for a second?
This has to do with a bill that a contractor gave us. I don't believe that bill is correct, I don't believe the work was done correctly, and I've stopped it. Now, I understand that you don't like that, it's pretty obvious you don't like that. You feel I've done something wrong. I don't feel I have, I feel I'm doing my job. So that's the end of the story.
I just need one more answer, Dan. Did you inspect the work done by this contractor?
Yes, the work that he done, that he done is fine. There's some stuff, like the painting and stuff, that we're gonna do at a later date, that's no part of his contract. What he did is absolutely fine.
Thank you, that's what I needed.
I mean, good lord, four thousand dollars to replace a bunch of sheet rock, put insulation in, tear all the texture off, clean the whole building up, redo all the mudwork, this is just ridiculous.
I move that we override the veto on twenty-five dash twenty.
Motion on the floor.
Folks, it's not gonna, it's not gonna really, it's not gonna take us further for people to have comments about it, okay? I've made a decision, I think I've made the right decision, the city attorneys backed me up, and in a sense, it's out of my hands. The council has a right to do whatever they wanna do. But now you know, and you've, everybody's seen out there, and you're on tape. You're doing this because I refused to sign a check that I believe the work wasn't up to snuff, and that there was some nefarious stuff done. Not because I didn't like this person.
That's what you believed we're doing, that's what you believed.
No, that's what Brian just said.
He didn't say that.
Yeah, he did say that.
No, you said it, you believed nefarious stuff, and you were having investigations. I remember the first time the air conditioner went out when I worked here, I called two people, the second guy that answered, come and fix it. You made him weave the air compressor on the ground outside, sit out there for two years, because you thought it was a buddy deal. Exactly, you're under investigation. Like you knew if that compressor was good or not.
Okay. In it?
I have a motion on the floor.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded by Mr. Vickers. Okay, roll call vote, please. Well, any discussion, further discussion?
The council, not the people.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Yancey?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliker?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner? Councilmember Rains?
Yes.
Councilmember Vickers?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Draper?
Yes.
Okay, the veto's been overturned. Okay, next, veto authorizing funding of hiring attorney Keys. On August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, the city council of Horseshoe Bend voted to approve Cody Keys as a counsel for the lawsuit involving seven councilmen slash recorder treasurer. The lawsuit involves the firing of two department heads under the contract of the city of Horseshoe Bend. On January third, twenty twenty-five, councilman passed an ordinance, twenty twenty-five, removing the mayor's authority to hire and fire city employees. The councilmen were warned by the city attorney and by the lead council of the Arkansas Municipal League that this was a mistake. However, the recorder treasurer informed the mayor he had no authority over contract employees. Further stating, neither were, these were not department heads, but they were designated as department heads, and they did have valid contracts. Both Broderick and Melter were identified as department heads and given contracts prior to this council being sworn in. The council further hired a replacement for both men. Their argument, the contracts were nullified via as both men received city paychecks ratifying the contracts. They were ultimately dismissed by the recorder treasurer without cause or prior authority. According to Arkansas Code fourteen fifty-eight three oh three and the Attorney General's Opinion two zero zero two point nine three, unequivocally locates in the mayor the power to determine what contracts the city will execute. I've been misled by the city council claiming the authority which they do not actually have. I've, they have deceived the citizens with me, and that they have the ultimate power over everybody and everything. At the meeting, numerous individuals spoke out against the use of the ARPA funds on any city funds to defend the action of the council, and were told not to do so. It is not in the best interest of the citizens of Horseshoe Bend to spend ARPA money funds on councilmen's defense. Those funds are for the benefit of citizens as a whole, and not a group of eight people, basically. That's my veto. Discussion.
The...
Oh, go ahead.
Department heads are not defined by the mayor, department heads have to be designated by the city council, has to approve department heads. Two, executing the contract...
Can I, can I just insert some legal advice?
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna advise y'all to not talk about the...
Ramifications, alright.
Lawsuit.
Those are lawsuits.
There's a whole panel of jurors out there.
Fine.
That may be jurors, I anticipate this being a jury trial, and...
Yeah, sorry, Judge Myers.
Good advice, thank you, Brad.
I, you know, don't wanna diminish what you're saying. I just wanna say that, you know, that's one of the reasons, you know, I'm not gonna talk about the lawsuit, because again, we don't need to influence these potential jurors. There may be jurors out there that are waiting to sit on this jury just so they can rule against you, or just so they can rule against somebody, and, and just, just don't need to put anything out there. I don't wanna be a part of any, you know, trying to influence potential jurors or trying to sway the public opinion.
Take your point, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the veto?
I move to override the veto.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Was that Travis?
Yes. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Yancey?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliker?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Rains?
Yes.
Councilmember Vickers?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Draper?
Yes.
Okay, veto's overruled. Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-five nineteen regarding meeting record.
This is the second reading, if I can find it.
Got it?
There it is. This is the second reading of this ordinance. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, an ordinance to set the policies and procedures for retention of public meeting records for reproduction and/or inspection. Whereas it is necessary for the city of Horseshoe Bend, Arkansas to retain records of public meetings so that the public can have access to those records for at least five years, be it hereby ordained that section one, except as provided under paragraph five of this section, a public meeting shall be recorded in a manner that allows for the capture of sound, including with, without limitation, A, a sound-only recording, B, a video recording with sound and picture, or C, a digital or analog broadcast capable of being recorded. Number two, if a member of a governing body attends a public meeting remotely, the remote portion of the public meeting that is recorded under paragraph one of this section shall be recorded in the format in which it is conducted. Three, a recording of a public meeting under paragraph one or paragraph two of this section shall be maintained by the city of Horseshoe Bend for a minimum of five years from the date of the public meeting. Four, the recording shall be maintained in a format that may be reproduced upon a lawful request. Five, paragraphs one of this section does not apply to executive sessions or volunteer fire departments. Section two, this recording shall be on DVD or other digital format which allows for the city personnel to reproduce said recording upon lawful request.
Okay, that's the second reading?
Yes.
Okay, new business. Resolution twenty twenty-five thirty.
These are all grant resolutions.
Yep.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty, be it resolved by the city council of Horseshoe Bend, state of Arkansas, resolution for the project entitled renovations to existing community center building. A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for a grant on behalf of the city. Whereas the Horseshoe Bend city council has determined that the city meets eligibility requirements necessary to apply for a grant under the Rural Services Block Grant Program, and whereas the city council of Horseshoe Bend, Arkansas is a local unit of general purpose government that will provide opportunity for input by residents in determining and prioritizing community development needs, and whereas the city council of Horseshoe Bend recognizes the need for the project, concurs in its importance, and supports Horseshoe Bend in its efforts to proceed with the same, and whereas the Horseshoe Bend city council has provided proof of the property value in the amount of zero dollars to be used as a match, and whereas the Horseshoe Bend city council hereby appropriates the sum of no less than ten thousand dollars to complete the local match money requirements for the project entitled renovations to exist community center building, and now, therefore be it resolved by the Horseshoe Bend city council that the city council affirms its commitment to take all action within its power to facilitate the receipt of this, the assistance of community development funds if the community center renovations project is awarded a Rural Services Block Grant, and upon receipt to administer said grant by the rules and regulations established by the United States of America, the state of Arkansas, and all empowered agencies thereof.
Okay, any questions, comments, discussion? Okay, do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty?
I'll make that motion.
Donnie makes the motion, do we have a second? Jeanette seconds it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say the same. Resolution is passed. Okay, so next resolution is twenty twenty-five thirty-one.
So this is also related to the same grant, and something that didn't come up in the discussion the previous meeting is it is required that we have an administrator, and the administrator that we normally would go to is White River Economic Development, so this is a resolution to allow that. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk of Horseshoe Bend, Arkansas to enter into an administrative agreement with the White River Planning and Development District, whereas the city of Horseshoe Bend, Arkansas anticipates funding from the Arkansas Economic Development Commission for a community development application, and whereas Horseshoe Bend, Arkansas requires assistance to identify and implement the regulations pertaining to this segment, and whereas it will be necessary for the mayor and city clerk to act in connection with the administrative agreement, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of Horseshoe Bend, Arkansas hereby declares that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute an agreement with the White River Planning and Development District to provide administrative services to the city. Such costs and contracts form must be pre-approved by AEDC, and all such costs to be paid by AEDC from the grant.
Okay, discussions, comments? Okay, do we have a motion to vote on resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one?
I'll make that motion.
Donnie makes the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jeanette seconds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say the same. Resolution passed. Okay, last resolution, twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two.
Just, just real quick before that one is one of the requirements for doing the work at the community center for any of these projects for the grant, you have to do an asbestos study, so we need to approve funds which will be five, six hundred dollars probably. It goes by how many tests you have to go, has to do, and we don't know how many that will be yet, it's twenty dollars. It's five hundred dollars to come in, and twenty dollars a test, so. But it's part of the deal, is we have to approve that asbestos study, so that's on the agenda next.
So would that be a thousand dollars, it'd be under that, right?
It should be under that, yes.
Alright, so then, do we have a motion to approve a thousand dollars? I guess for asbestos abatement?
It's just a study, right, so hopefully there doesn't have to be any...
Where would the funds be coming from, Bill?
Parks and Rec, I guess.
I just, that should be in there, in the motion.
You'll do a cleanup ordinance probably at the end of the year that takes all these things into consideration.
I move that we approve a thousand dollars from Parks and Rec's budget toward the asbestos investigation. Is that right? Sound good?
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
David seconds the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say the same. Approved. Okay, resolution.
So just so everybody knows, this is another grant that's, at the same time, doesn't require any of the same scrutiny, 'cause it would probably just be equipment rather than anything to be built. And it's also, it's from the Division of Emergency Management, and the idea would be to put a backup generator at the community center, 'cause it could be an emergency shelter, it's high ground, and if there's flooding or whatever, that'd be someplace people could go. And so, the idea would be to try to get a generator there, so that's what this one is, and it doesn't really take, it doesn't have to administrator, it's a lot easier than the other one. So, I think this one is a... So I think this one is a seventy-five twenty-five though, so we would have to foot some of the cost. So, yeah, I'll read it. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two, resolution by Horseshoe Bend, Arkansas to apply for a grant from Arkansas Division of Emergency Management. Whereas Horseshoe Bend, Arkansas recognizes the need to mitigate disasters when they occur. And whereas the city wishes to apply for an Arkansas hazard mitigation grant through the Arkansas Division of Emergency Management. And whereas the mayor and the city council understand that if granted funds for this purpose, the city is responsible for twenty-five percent of the cost. And whereas Horseshoe Bend, Arkansas will provide maintenance for the equipment installed using these grant funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of Horseshoe Bend, Arkansas hereby authorize the mayor to submit an application for grant funding to the Arkansas Division of Emergency Management for hazard mitigation grant funds.
Hey, any discussion, comments?
What's the potential top limit of this grant?
I think it's a hundred thousand as well. I don't think we'll be anywhere near that, but.
Just a, a significant amount, what, twenty-five percent?
I don't know what size generator we knew. We've just started this, this is something that came up when we met with White River last week. And they, it was on the last page and then I got an email when I got back, it said, well, maybe we should look into this. So that's as far as we are right now, but we kind of have to move. And if, you know, I don't have a dollar amount yet, but I just know it will be substantially less than the total possible.
Should we top out at twenty-five thousand though, if it's a hundred thousand?
Right, correct.
Any other questions?
Water tower's up there, right? So you have water and you have the power. Radio tower's there.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say the same. Resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-two passed. Okay, so committee vacancies.
We have several, we have many applications in for positions on committees.
I received two today. I haven't had a chance to talk to the people at all about the committees, so I don't have anybody to appoint.
You did receive the other applications?
I got two today.
They're, they're being submitted to the city.
They're put in your mailbox, but probably after you already grabbed your packet, but still you wouldn't have got it much before this.
Well, I got two. I'm more than willing to talk to the people and see about putting them up.
You got nine applications.
I got two. Can I say that one more time? I got two.
That's what's in your mailbox, but I guess.
Well, if it's in my mailbox, it's in there now.
Right, it was in there before I left today, so.
Anyways, yeah, I'll look over these and I want to talk to these people, for sure. Okay.
Planning committee has at least four vacancies. Zoning has three. Planning actually has seven, but three can be on zoning and planning, is that right? Or is the other way around?
Well, some of the, the committee positions out of planning go on to zoning and go on to building. And we already have people there. So we certainly can move those into those other committees. And yeah, I'll gladly talk with people that volunteer for the committees. But yeah, I didn't have these applications and I had no idea that, uh, that's what this is going to be in terms of, you know, who told this man to drive all the way here tonight? Because I didn't. I didn't even know he was going to be here.
He was one of the last ones to apply, so he brought his application today, I think.
Huh? The guy that just left?
He was, he was not here today.
From West Point?
He was out of town.
Oh. All right. Public comments? Any public comments?
He was.
Yeah, he's, okay, Uriah, come on up if you have a comment. I'm sorry I didn't see you, Billy, go ahead. Whoever.
Can I move, can I move this out a little? Anyway, um. I've worked really hard on the Gene Stanton Veterans Open. And it's sad to say that I'm going to have to cancel it. And definitely I will not reschedule it. I did not come to the decision lightly, but it's a decision I had to make. So all sponsor money that I have collected will be returned in full, so, sorry.
Well, I want to thank you for working on that and I want to thank you for setting the tournaments up for this year because you put a lot of work into them. Okay, Uriah?
Okay, council, I'm here on behalf of the Boy Scouts. Um, I'm sure this is a hot topic right now. Uh, I'm sure most of you know what I'm talking about since I emailed all you guys, um, which I got no response. I'm not here to play blame game, I'm here to find out if there's a solution to get the building finished. It's been kind of on the back burner for a little while, um, and I would just like to see the building done. So I spent time this weekend, I met with four different contractors, two of which I have sealed bids here for, one that also has said that he will turn in a bid, he hasn't had it done yet, but these are the four contractors I met with, all residences of city of Horseshoe Bend, none have ever done work for the city and are all licensed with the city and then state. So I did my portion, I'd just like to see you guys step up and get the building done, whether it's for the Boy Scouts or anyone else. I just think it's just another one of those projects that's been forgotten, left on the back burner, it just needs to be done. Thanks.
Thank you. One question, was the, uh, air conditioning heat later unit, was that interned into the insurance company to get that replaced?
Yes, it's been turned into the insurance company.
Well, make sure you speak with Mike De Senso about that because he gave us that original unit at cost and he put it in for zip. Any other questions or comments, public concerns?
Yes, I have a public concern.
Well, Carol, come up. I'll come back to you, Brian.
All right.
Um, I just wanted to ask.
You can pull it down, just pull it right down, Carol. Pull it right down. The top.
It's okay, I can talk without it being too close. Anyway, uh, my question is, Brian, how long did you have the, um, grant information on, uh, for the grant? The one that we've been talking about tonight in the town hall? How long have you had that grant information?
I said that earlier, I found it as I was working on the first grant of the Fun Park Grant. I found this grant.
When was that?
I don't know the exact date.
A month?
Maybe two weeks, maybe two weeks.
I know.
A month?
We talked about it in finance.
I know, talked about it in finance.
Okay, so for a couple of weeks at least. Did you try to do a survey at all?
On?
On whether the people want the community center or they wanted something else. That's part of doing that type of grant. And no survey was done, was it?
That's what we're doing tonight, having a public meeting, as instructed by White River.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm not blaming, I'm just asking a question.
No, I'm, I'm just telling you what, what we did.
Right, ad company. Board meeting? What board meeting?
Ward, ward.
Ward, the town hall meeting. Oh, I didn't even hear about that one. I don't know how it was, was it published in the newspaper? Okay, all right. You know, something I want to say to you, Bill, is when you're putting out the agenda, could you put just beside the ordinance what the ordinance is about? It would be very helpful for the people that are looking at the agenda so that we know, you know, that it's resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-five and what it's all about. It would be a good thing, you know, so.
I was just going to say though, that, that this particular grant is very, very narrow in terms of what you can do with it. So, um, it has to be a community building of some sort and there are certain things that your, your goals.
It doesn't have to be a community building though, it could, well, it has to belong in the community, but it doesn't have to be that.
Building, yeah, public building, something in the community.
Or it could have maybe been the pool building or something else.
I don't think it could, based on what their, what the restrictions were for what you could do with it, so.
I'll read the grant tomorrow.
Okay, well, anyway, I, I just had questions about how long you'd had it because I almost feel like, you know, not very many of the community is here tonight to represent our community if we're twenty-four hundred people strong. Uh, maybe there's some people out there that really want more time to have a look at it. That's it, thank you.
Okay, Brian, finish this off.
Okay, my public concern starts with the mayor's responsibility to fill committee vacancies, as we've seen tonight. Uh, he said he had two, but he wasn't ready, but it was announced before that there was fifteen vacancies. We need, we need to move on like the municipal street improvement district. The mayor, uh, said that he had a special administrator and no need of commissioners. That was a statement he made in the last meeting. The thing is, he said from the beginning that his special administrator does not take the place of commissioners. We still should have commissioners appointed as requested by the special administrator to aid him in just the, the, uh, filing and, and the data and so forth. We're leaving it to one man when it used to be, uh, three people. And he asked for help. Mayor's actions also have been evident tonight with difficulties with contractors. And the mayor also hired, uh, an attorney for eighteen thousand dollars, uh, when the, uh, people were unaware of it. Mayor also entered into three hundred thousand dollar contract for the roofing company, again unawares to the city council. Mayor also says he's full time, but since the beginning of the year, he's been basically in office, uh, in the city hall office, but basically about two days a week. And so before he was here every day, I would say. Animal control building's another that, well, it's currently thirty-seven thousand dollars, but it was initiated without council approval. And, uh, city council also has spent ninety-two thousand on a pavilion and it still does, was not ADA compliant, but it will be soon, hopefully. The mayor's also targeted citizens with code enforcement officer, animal control officer. And the mayor has not paid Ballard and Company who had worked for the city for years for their prior work. Mayor's refused to sign ordinances and resolutions, even if they've been overridden his veto, he still has to sign them. See, the city council's forced to create a ordinance now for another signatory. The mayor had, uh, roofs on condemned buildings repaired. And these things, among others, have been brought to our attention. And I move that city council vote a, a vote of no confidence for Mayor Dwayne Delair.
Can I add, do that real quick? Had devastating fire here two weeks ago last Monday. Lost five businesses right now, hopefully they're, they're coming back. Russ hopefully will get his store back open. But at the same time, Mayor, you were walking around talking to a firefighter, telling him our chief is useless and he needs to be replaced. What did you say to him? Because I heard, I, he told me straight, you're talking to basically his family member.
I don't care what he told you, I never said that.
Did you not say he needed to be replaced?
No, I did not say that either.
You calling me a liar then?
Yeah, if that's what you're saying.
You're calling him a liar too?
I'm calling whoever said it a liar because I did not say that. You know, you could, you can say.
You can say whatever you want to say, but let's, let's talk about reality here.
I will get him there.
The animal control building was approved, the money for that building. And it was thirty-six thousand dollars was the original bill on that building. Then the people that were actually going to put the building up backed out of putting it up. So then we got a contractor to put the building up and it was more expensive because steel had gone up.
We have a motion on the floor.
Guy who did that.
There's a motion on the floor.
I understand that, but I'm letting people talk. I don't have anything to say.
That's what I need.
Well, I don't, I don't know if I should because I'm not sure what the purpose is other than all this kind of craziness. And now I recognize who you are, you're the dog guy over on Pioneer Lake.
I am.
Yes, do you know it's against the law to have a dog on a public beach where people swim? That's why it says no dogs?
It says no dogs off, off a leash on the sign.
Right, and there's no, and, and there's, there's no dogs that can be there because people swim there. I'm not attacking a citizen, I'm telling him that you cannot have dogs on a public beach, that's why it says no dogs. Well, let's go ahead with the motion on the floor then, and I won't say anymore. Okay.
There's a motion in a second.
There is a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Yancey?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliker?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Rains?
Yes.
Councilmember Vickers? Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Draper?
Yes.
Okay, there's a vote of no confidence for the mayor.
Publicly, they told the world they did not have any confidence in the mayor. Just what it, just what it says, a vote of no confidence. They're saying they have no confidence in his ability to be a mayor.
Any other discussion? Or do we have a motion for adjournment?
Excuse me?
About the animal control employees.
Well, my suggestion on that, but please don't listen to me. This is a dispute between two citizens and we shouldn't get involved in it. Doesn't involve the animal control officers what, whatsoever. It's a fight that happened online and just so. And just so that you know, training a dog, dog crating, training a dog overnight, that's not cruelty to animals. And the animals at that shelter look better now than they have ever looked. And we are a no-kill shelter. We adopt all our animals out now. We do not kill them. That's a huge step forward for people.
Yeah, that's in the packet.
No, I don't know what, I don't know what the Facebook page was, but Bill controls the city page and I have a separate mayor page. There was nothing on there about any of this stuff. I think they were fighting on life in Horseshoe Bend.
It was Ward four, Horseshoe Bend, Ward four.
All right, well.
David De Vecchio is recovering and he is working on a change on the city's ordinance for animal control because we cannot designate ourselves as a no-kill shelter without changing the ordinance. And there are several little things there that David thinks need to be changed, like a leash on a cat. Have you ever put a leash on a cat? I did that once. My cat just squatted down and wouldn't go nowhere. I wasn't dragging by the leash. He just didn't, didn't like the leash, but. Again, I, David is working on it and I am assisting him. I, I'm not trying to overrule him or bypass him in any way, shape or form. He is animal control. He's supposed to present it to us, his changes. I'm working with David De Vecchio. He's, he's recovering right now. We all know that.
You might want to take out the fact that it's illegal to have a pet shop in Horseshoe Bend. You have what? It's illegal to have a pet shop in Horseshoe Bend. Nobody can. It's illegal. It says in the ordinance.
No, it's in the ordinance.
The ordinance says it's illegal to have a pet shop in.
There's, there's several things David's working on. I'm not gonna interject myself. That's not what I said. I said I'm working with David De Vecchio. Do you need to come a little closer or, I don't know?
Do I have a meet of?
Let's talk about the dog.
Okay.
Show me where I cannot have a dog on the beach. Show me.
It's health code.
Health code, no. There's a sign that says no, no dogs unattended. No, no dogs off leash.
It says, I believe it says no dogs on the beach.
That was a sign you and David made.
No, no, we, no, it says right on the thing, no dogs on the beach. What we put up was a picture of a dog and we put a picture of the circle where they can't be there. Do you understand that if your.
He told me dog.
Do you understand if your dog goes to the bathroom on that beach?
I clean it up. I have to clean it up.
Wait a second, he has worms. Those worms will live there for seventy-five years on that grass, so some kid steps on it.
I carry a shit bag when they do it.
It doesn't matter. He can still get worms. It's a public health law. It's not the ocean. There isn't salt in that water that sterilizes things. It's fresh water.
He was right next to me and he'd only been out of my truck for five seconds when he came at me. Same as you. You guys have come at me because I have a dog on leash. I just put my granddaughters in the water. My dog don't like people. He just wants to smell around for a second. If he goes to the bathroom, I'll clean it up. And I, I do every time. I carry my bag with me. I put him right back in the truck. He, that's all he wants.
I understand that, but public health law says you cannot have a dog on a beach. Go to public health over in Melbourne. Well, call public health in Melbourne.
Whoever put up the other sign, I don't know. But the original said dog on leash and my dog was on leash.
I know it's late, so I'm gonna try to hurry. I just wanted to talk about the bid package that Uriah had for those sealed bids. I'm not saying anything about Uriah trying to get that job done. It, it needs to get done. It's something that's been overdue and needs to get done. But if we have citizens coming up to the departments or a council without even going through the department with sealed bids that hasn't been put in the paper, I mean, they're, they're asking me to do this even though it's not a state requirement to do it at, at that amount. They're not putting in the paper, they're not having a bid package. Who, who knows what they're bidding on? I run the department. I have no idea what the bid, what they're even bidding on. And I think that's something that i- if council, council allows, is gonna be a dangerous thing, even in any department in the city.
I was gonna say that, Dan. I think they all need to get routed through you because otherwise you don't know.
Right, it's, it's not that I want to, it's not that I want to throw it away, but, but how could you, you could honestly say those are your handpicked contractors, just like you're saying that I'm doing the same thing. Okay. Okay, all I'm saying is, we have to go through the department. It has to, it has to have a bid package so we know what the contractors are bidding on. And it's gotta be posted in the paper. It's a simple thing. You can't circumvent the system. No, we're done. Where's this, where's this law from?
Public, it says public.
It's AI-generated, anyways. Do I have a motion to end the meeting?
Make a motion.
Good for you. All those in favor by saying aye? Opposed? We're done. I'm gonna keep these anyways because it's, you've got it in the newspaper?
What?
You got the ad in the newspaper?
I didn't know about it until you just told me now.
I emailed you the other day with it.
I didn't see it, I'm sorry. As far as I know, I didn't get it.
Well, it said it was delivered.
I'll get an ad in tomorrow.